I've got a permit request, 25-2. It's from Phillip Jones. He's requested driveway permit, 5637 South Hope, US 31. 150-foot driveway and will require and place a six-inch culvert. John Flynn went down, looked at it, and everything looked all right.
You good with it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit that John presented.
Good. Second. Motion made second to defer the permit. This is permit number 2502. All in favor? Carries three of them.
So, other than dealing with winter, which we've been doing quite a bit of that recently, they patched holes, run brush cutter, still working with RMC. We did have Betty Salisbury. He came in, he has a crusher, came in with a key on it, he's crushing millings. He's about to get a crush. He's going to move up here to Rochester, probably when the weather warms up, do some crushing up there for us, so we can use that on our road program this coming year. Bridge 161, on the 26th of February at 11 o'clock at the Rochester Public County Library. We're having a pre-con meeting with LaPorte Construction on that.
Excuse me, where'd you say that was again?
The 26th at 11. Be with LaPorte, USI Utilities, lots of different people. We turned the bridge 170 in for February 8. We haven't heard anything back yet. That should be coming any time here soon. Bridge 95, that was the multiplate that we put in down at South Mud Community Crossing Project. We got it done last week when we had a little bit of warm weather, so we got all permits that we needed.
Went good?
Went two days, we had it done.
Good deal.
They've still got some dirt piled up. They got it touched up when the weather's bad, but culvert's in. And then Bridge 174, which is the other big culvert with community crossings that's on 375 West between 2 and 350 South. That one's been ordered to get it soon when the weather's bad, we'll put that one in. That one's 240-foot long. Runs right down the middle of the road for a way, so that's a big project. That's why we put it on community crossings. And then just remind you that on the 3rd of your March meeting, we're going to have awards for this year's community crossings, and there's going to be contingent on us getting awarded those projects.
How soon will you know on those?
What we'll do is we'll open the bids, and we probably won't award them until we get word from NDOT that we receive or receive part of our application. And NDOT suggested that we do it this way, so we can move forward faster with our projects at the work.
Okay.
So, that way, you know, you get a better bid. Your contractors can plan their work through the summer months, rather than coming into summer and trying to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And our two new dump trucks, I talked to WA Jones today. The first one's done, the single axle, they're taking it to South Bend. There was a wiring issue in the cab. They're having Truck Centers fix that, send it to the army, and then it'll be delivered. And the second one, they've still got some work to do on the pad. We'll be getting that here pretty soon. Those two trucks are almost to us. And the last thing I had for you tonight, I need to set a date for spring bids for oil and gas.
Give us some time.
I'd like to do it maybe the 2nd, Friday in March. Give us time to advertise it.
October the 14th?
Yes, that would work for you guys. 3, 4, 5. That work for you, Brian?
Yeah.
10:30?
Sure.
3, 14. 10:30. And that's all I have. Unless you have anything for me. John Flynn wants to talk to you in a minute.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
I was approached by the fire department, and they were wondering if they were a possibility to be able to get one load of the screen millings, the crush millings, the back of the fire department on their limestone driveway. They're having issues to try and keep it in the spot when they come around, when they come in to get their fire trucks. So you brought it up?
Yep.
I know, I don't have a problem with it. You guys like to help out the fire departments and hand it out, so I go with our blessing.
Yep. Go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Tell Mike, he's got it.
All right.
Doug, did you have anything you wanted to come into with these guys?
No, I'm kind of on the EMA side.
Okay.
I've got shit.
Okay, well, I see. I'm down now to EMA, so.
Yeah, he's kind of jumped ship a little bit after. I didn't know if he wanted to have him come up. Why was that for? Kind of after all the heads due, so I figured that's when he wanted them. Just real quick, a few things. Started kind of a new thing with the three commissioners and giving them a report every Friday on operations within EMA for the week, so they're out there a little bit more. I've done a couple of classes recently. I did a KIMs PAC class, for those of you who don't know what the KIMs PACs are, is if we have any, you know, like the white powder substances, things like that, where the locations are in our surrounding region. One of the things, good to know for us, that's where they're at, and so on and so forth. Then the integrated preparedness class that I did also, kind of go hand in hand there. A lot of WebEOC advisories, communications between highway department commissioners, other EMA directors in our surrounding counties, putting an advisory on, taking an advisory off as far as travel. That's something that I don't have to bring in like a burn ban to the commissioners. I can do that without having to bring it in, but I also double-check everything with them and with John at the highway department. Speaking of the burn bans, I'm gearing up for those already, putting in a lot of research, talking with other counties. I'll be presenting that probably at the next meeting for burn bans, is where we can go from there on the burn bans. Don't forget, Monday, the 24th, this next Monday, we're having Jason Meeks in from DeKalb County. This is geared really for a lot of our government officials, for incident commands, operations, so they know what to do, you know, where to be, and things like that when it comes to any kind of incident that they're responsible for. So that will open that up a little bit more for them. Now that we have, and I'm hoping Travis is going to hit on something here too, that we put the new monitor in a couple of months ago out at EMA, and we're doing a lot more teams meetings and streams and stuff like that. So it's been very helpful, and it helps me out a lot as far as getting more attendance to some of the other meetings. So I'm hoping Travis is going to hit on another thing too. Him and I talked last week as far as something that's going on that we have to use. I do have one last thing. I want to make sure I got one last thing. I've got notes, because I have it. I do have an EMA board meeting tomorrow. It was advertised as a single meeting to get the rest of the meetings for the year approved. And what Travis is going to hit on, I can utilize for sure for the EMA board meetings and possibly for the LEPC meetings within our county. I'm getting conflicting answers on that right now, but for sure. Last thing I have is a, this Thursday, the 20th, it's an active shooter preparedness webinar. So instead of having to go and attend, if anybody's interested in that, I do have the flyers here. I have where you can get on, sign up for it. And I think it's just a two-hour webinar, but it would be good to see, especially if you're a figurehead within the county, some of us, you know, may need it.
What time is it?
That one is at 10:00. I believe I forwarded that to you.
Yeah, you did. I just forgot.
But it would be good as far as figureheads for the county here to have that too. I mean, they do them in person, but this is done by SISCA, and they do the webinar on it, so I'm looking forward to seeing that, not having to go somewhere. But whenever the county commissioners are ready, I do have three of our area ham operators here, Doug's wanting to talk with you, but two, I think, supportive, so EMA slash ham operators.
Well, we're in the EMA. Why don't we just?
Okay.
Want to do that? We've had, probably the last year and a half, we've been within the amateur club that we've got in Polk County. We organized what we call the Ares Group, which is amateur radio emergency services. It's a nationwide service. We're, it's a way that we can leave home and play radios if we don't get in trouble for it. So with myself, I've got eight other members that's in the group, Tom Murray and Brian Johnson are two of them. We try and set up communications on the emergency side of things to where when all of the sophisticated stuff goes down, you know, we can still talk. We don't rely on the internet, we don't rely on any infrastructure, you know, as long as we've got a radio and a battery, we can talk. So with that, I talked to Don and I've talked to Brittany just a little bit on a system that we've got, we've got three stations in the county now that's capable of doing it. And it's sending emails and FEMA forms over the air. It's all military encryption that they use on it, so everything is documented safe when you send it. The problem is, we need an act, what would be considered an access point, is a computer that's hooked up to a radio, hooked up in an antenna, and you can call in with another radio to that system, download all your messages, all your emergency forms, medical forms, things like that. It goes to the internet to the recipient that it's supposed to give to. That way, if, say, the exercise that you guys are planning this summer down Grass Creek, we could set up a terminal there, it would come back to the main unit to send that out to the internet, to go to Travis, go out to the hospital, go to EMA, wherever it needs to go to for instant accidents. The, we need a high-profile area to set this up in. We want to be central in the county, so no matter where you're at in the county, you've got a good chance of getting into a break. We've got 100-foot tower out to the county highway. The antenna is already on the top of the tower, the old VHF antenna for the old radio system, is one that we could use for this system. So I guess I'm asking Blessing to utilize what's already there. It's already running into the building. We just hook up to that antenna. I talked to Josh about internet, and he said the internet's already out there, what would we plug into for it? Just the blessing of putting our system out there and utilizing the tower we've already got, so we can start tying in every place, all the fire departments in the county, EMA. We want to talk to the hospital and try and get a system out there. If you guys want more information on this, you know, I can bombard with all sorts of documents on it. But I didn't, I just wanted to try and sort and sweep, because it's basically a pretty simple system once you have it set up. But I guess if we had access to the tower and have our equipment upstairs in the garage, it doesn't take very much room. It would be.
Doug talked to me about that a couple of weeks ago, and most of what he was talking about was up here. I kind of, I said, "Just come to the meeting and kind of present it." And I was talking with John, he was, "You're good with it, aren't you?"
Yeah, I think it makes sense, because you're keeping it in a county building. You have an emergency like that, the highway's going to be out anyway, most likely, so you're going to have access to it. And that's even after Doug's retired 20 years from now. But, you know, they'll still have access to it.
I think it sounds like a good idea.
And it keeps space on your other tower, the sheriff's department, for other uses.
We would like to eventually transfer over there to that, just for the simple fact that you've got sustainability on the backup power with the generator, to where the only backup power I'm going to have, if I put the system in there, is a battery, to where I'll have maybe six or seven hours on that battery than the battery I'm going to have.
I will say, I've checked with some of our other surrounding EMA departments, St. Joe County and Gass County and, I'm trying to think, Marshall. And our guys here, our ham operators and Ares clubs here, and what their capabilities are, they don't have those capabilities. So we're pretty fortunate to have these guys and have this set up in the county. I know it's over some of our heads, but worst-case scenario, we're down. This is our backup.
We've still got a backup. I just thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, I just taught a backup to the backup to the backup, so.
That should do it with you guys.
I think, guys.
Sounds good, guys.
Good, good. Thank you. Our blessing.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, guys.
Tom, Brian?
Thanks.
Okay, Travis?
Good evening.
Hey, Travis.
I did a little bit more than usual, but still not above. I know, right? I did send reports out. Any questions on the reports or anything? For whatever reason, I admitted the animal control report. I gave you copies of it before we began, so no questions with that. We had 130 inmates this morning, 14 of those federal, 66 we're holding for Grant County. A new one that we're starting to see now is DHS holds. We've got three of those and three for DOC.
What's the DHS?
Homeland Security Demigration.
Oh, okay.
Howard County, we're not holding for them anymore. They've got their, they've got their numbers down enough where they don't need us. I foresee that being very short-term, as soon as it starts getting warm out, their numbers will back up, and they'll be looking for a place to stay. So we don't have any for Howard County right now, and our feds are up.
Is the DHS like a fed? Is it paid by the same?
It's not paid at all. They do, it's what they call a detainer for a 48-hour hold, and then they come get them.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's just, you're just holding on?
We just hold on to them. They give us a detainer, and then they say, it's 48-hour investigative hold, so they say, yes, we want them, and we don't after 48 hours, so.
Okay.
But that's the new one that I saw this morning when I pulled the report, so I even had to look it up. I'm like, what are these other agencies? Because once in a while, we'll hold one for, you know, Stark County or something else, but we had four of them this morning. I thought it was pretty unusual, so. The proposal I talked to you guys about, so that the whole public meeting happened to be livestreamed and all of that, we had them come in and give us a quote. That's kind of what Don was talking about. The way, the way my legal deputy, and I don't know about Holly, interprets the new statute, basically any public meeting has to be livestreamed, so you have to build that infrastructure up. So we had the same company that you guys used here come out and give us a quote. I sent all that to you, along with the sales agreement. Josh has some vegetarian monies available for that, and then we have commissary that I was going to do the other half with on that, to do that. I sent that sales agreement to you. Was there any issues with that or anything? It's not a contract, but I wanted to be transparent with you guys. You guys have any objections with it, or any questions on that or anything?
No, I didn't have to do it.
And that's one thing, we were talking, I talked to Don about last week, is, you know, with all of these meetings having to be done, right now, this is the only place we could do them, and I know that we've got four of them out there now that we have to do monthly. And then with Don with EMA, and I'm certain LEPC is a public meeting, so basically anything has to be advertised as a public meeting. So minus executive sessions, they've got to be livestreamed, so. I don't know, I'll pencil it in, because that's July 1 deadline on that. With that, Josh and I have got a meeting with Joe on Friday. We're not going to do anything until, because Josh said there's some situations here that he wants to get wrapped up, so we're not going to commit to anything quite yet, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys were good with that, so. Guard 1, I sent as well. Basically, in a nutshell, we use the pipe, it's Guard 1 pipe system, it's basically a round checking system for the jail. We've used that since 2014 in the jail. We haven't done any upgrades or anything to it. Basically, it logs security rounds, especially at nighttime. People are, our staff are actually going around to check on inmates' wellbeing at night. This just totally updates everything with it. We're looking at RFID wristbands that go on the inmates. That's going to have a bunch of encoded information, as much encoded information as we want. Name, date of birth, arrest number, where they're from, if they've got any allergies to meds, if they've got any KEAT separates, any gang affiliations, any issues at all. They're tamper-proof, they're not tamper-resistant, but I figured that they're $1.95 apiece for the bands. We'll take care of the first one. After that, we're going to start charging them if they start tampering with it. Right now, we're dependent on the inmates, particularly holding these federal inmates and out-of-county inmates. We don't know everybody, our staff doesn't know everybody, so we're dependent on the inmates telling us who they are, especially at MedPass. They've got a med card they carry around, and they go up there, and they've got meds for Brian Lewis. They're dependent on Brian Lewis to really be Brian Lewis when he comes up there and says it this way, as opposed to being dependent on Brian to say who he is. We can scan the wristband, they can look at it, yes, this is Brian Lewis. So all in all, it just makes complete sense. It's going to, it's going to make better tracking for the staff, better accountability for the staff, and it is just kind of a security check for us, like the MedPass and KEAT separates and things like that, so. I plan on approaching the council tomorrow night with that, I think using that 4302 fund, which is the jail operations fund. For that, the cost was, I think, we're at $23,000 for the system, and then annual maintenance, we'd be able to take care of it with our blessing. I know there was a sales agreement in on that, you said that, that was fine as well, so. Again, that's not a contract, it's just a proposal, but any objections, we proceed forward with the council on that.
It looks good. I'm surprised that you've gone from 2014 to now without another.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't done it. And I'll be honest with you, with the low numbers, it was never an issue. You knew who your, you knew who your guys were, your local inmate. I mean, it's the same, it's the same percentage of population, so we know who they are, but these great counties, especially these federal inmates, we don't know who they are, so.
So you just take that in? You just take that?
Yep. It's just a barcode, yep.
There's your picture?
Gives you a picture. As much information or as little information as you want on it. We can print as much information or as little information as we want on it, so. We can, they can all be blank, they don't say anything, we have a picture of them, we can have a picture of their name on it, but when they scan it, it's going to give that staff that immediate information then, so.
And you back upload computers so you know when you make the rounds?
Exactly, yeah, exactly. And it'll let us know if rounds are missed and things like that, too, so. I did forget to say, we did invoice in January for $119,270 for holding out county inmates, so. I guess I should have told you that before I asked to spend money. Should have told you we made money, so. And that's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions for me.
I don't, I don't think so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Brittany?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, just have a couple of things. Today, we had Evans Consuls come in and they swept out and cleaned the consoles, and it was actually not bad, so that's a good thing to report. That's just something we'll do once or twice a year to make sure everything's nice and clean on places that we can't see. Speaking of Evans Consuls, on Thursday is the big day for the ADA move, so I'll have Evans IT, well, excuse me, I'll have IT and DND Electric there on tomorrow night to unplug Terminal 3. And then on Thursday morning, they'll be there to do the move, and then DND and IT will be there again to hook everything back up. We just thought it was a good idea to have DND Electric there, they were part of the project, actually the guy that did all the wiring, he's going to be the one that's there, so he's familiar, and we're not going to have any issues, which I claim that right now, so it's going to be fun. I had a part-time employee for six hours, and then I don't have a part-time employee anymore. It had nothing to do with her not being able to do the job, I just think for some personal issues, she stepped away, and she hopes that we can consider her when she's able to, so. Would have been a good one, but it's gone. Yeah. I had my EMDQ class, Quality Assurance, last week, despite we finding out later I had COVID, I did pass. So I felt like I was going to die on Thursday, and took the test, and I was a little nervous, but it's done, and I passed it, and that's good. I've been working on the communication plan for the exercise. I met with IMSIC today. I just wanted to get refreshed on all the channels and making sure that I was up to speed on that. And actually, over communication plan, it's going to be more of what's called a pace plan, which is going to be explaining what the primary duties are, backups and so forth of what we do currently. Then that goes into the alternative mode, so if the primary system goes down, what's our alternative? And then when the alternative goes down, what's my contingency plan? You know, just making sure, and then emergency plan after that. So that's basically what the communication plan is going to look like. It's going to look a little different than what you guys have seen in the past. It's going to be more of like the infrastructure of when A is done, what's going to happen with B and so forth. So I started working on that today. I'm hoping to have that done by Monday, when the fire departments and such be just a kind of, an introductory to what this plan is going to look like for the exercise. And lastly, I thought I'd step up my game a notch and give you guys some statistics. We average about 15 911 calls a day, and three seconds or less, we're answering that 911 call, so that's a big deal. If it's taken more than three seconds, we got a problem, so they're right on target. Inbound, we had 468 911 calls, and this is for the month of January. A total of the 911 calls was 1,432, so that's all different types of 911 calls needing from Phase 1 to Phase 2, and you probably don't want to hear any of that, but, so. 1,432, that's a lot of 911 calls. As far as administration, we received 3,243 calls, so I take that back. We had 2,228 inbound, 914 outbound, which totaled 32, 43. Text messages, we had 49, so that was incoming, outgoing, that was a total of 49. So that means we're actually having a good voice conversation with people versus sending out the 49.
And people are using your text message now?
Oh, yeah. So sometimes it's successful, sometimes it's not, but we're initiating that every time we don't have an active call to talk to somebody with. So I'll email them next time, that's all I think I'm going to do. And that's all I got.
EMS Thursday morning, 9:00.
EMS Thursday.
That's at the jail, is that correct?
Yep, it's at the jail. The advisory meeting. Yeah, Thursday's a night there, so the active shooter, I'd like to bet in on that, but.
Do you want to? Forget that, it might be a pretty long one.
Yeah, it's not until 10:00.
Yeah, just that being. But yeah, everything's going good in this guy, besides me having the flu and COVID within a couple of weeks, so hopefully we're on the stretch, so.
That's good, Brittany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all. Michael? He's kind of hiding back there, I didn't see it from sight.
Hi, Brian. Couple of weeks ago, I told you about the two housing projects that got awarded, the tax credits and things. We're expecting dirt to get turned in May, that both of them should be starting back to them. And we have a general location for the hotel, which is up on that empty ground behind the pilot. We're waiting for the, actually, for the annexation to go through, and then they will pick the exact spot. We'll have to throw infrastructure out there and roads, extensions, but if things go the way that we hope that they will, there should be a lot of future growth out there. That hotel will pack some good restaurants, we think, in commercial distance, whatnot. And the last item is a little googlish, and I apologize for that, but a few days before he passed away, Jim signed the MOU. I've signed the MOU, and we have control of the property south of 155 acres for the start of the industrial works, so. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Okay, that covers the department heads. We've got a couple of things here. We have a Polk County India Resolution Number 0218225, Resolution to authorize payment to county employees. County India Resolution Number 02182025, resolution to authorize payment to county employees, whereas on the 6th of February 2025, for non-essential employees, there was a climate weather delay. Whereas Fulton County Commissioners determined the date would open two hours late to ensure safety for employees, now therefore be resolved, Fulton County Commissioners have approved the Fulton County non-essential employees to be paid to inclement weather and to maintain safety to the employees. This is to be passed and adopted here this day on the 18th of February. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Okay.
Okay, motion made, so any discussion? If not, all in favor? Then we have a funding agreement for Fulton County Hope. It is, I think this is the same as we had last year, the county agrees to provide funding for county revenues to an amount of $25,000 with the county year of 2025, the agency to show you these county tax revenues, and fulfill all the obligations.
How much does that take?
$25,000.
Okay. Virgil asked me, instead of the Hope, if they could align it pathways, because that's where that is all ran out of now.
Okay, did you change the name, though?
Well, it's just, that's where, that's where, that portion of Hope has moved into is lighted pathways, and that way it doesn't have to go to Hope, then go over to lighted pathways. So if we can.
Okay, so we want, she's wanting the check made to?
Lighted pathways.
To lighted pathways, so we need to change this from Fulton County Hope to lighted pathways? Is there a problem with that?
You want, you want that amended?
Yeah, it's going to have to be. It's going to have to, and they'll make that money.
Yeah, they're going to have to fill out a new one, so it says lighted pathways.
Okay.
Because when we, if that gets pulled by.
It's going to say Hope, then why is it that?
Yeah, State Board of Council question.
And if that's already budgeted, is that budget, line item, going to have to be changed too, or?
Can we do that with appropriations?
How's that going to work, Kathy?
I don't know if it'll connect with a deal.
That's.
For the future coming up, whether you can change that up.
Oh, you mean, you think we can get by with this one this time?
Yeah, I don't think they'll have an issue, but for, for the future.
I would say for you to make a motion to amend that.
The name.
This from Hope to?
This, that resolution.
As well as transfer funds from Hope to lighted pathways?
I don't, it's not, I don't think it's line item, but hang on, I'm looking. You can go ahead with that part, I can help with that.
I suppose that's Hope, right?
It says, but the portion goes, the proportion of that Hope that we are doing that for is revert to Virgil.
Right.
She's moved, that is being run under lighted pathways now.
Right, and when that motion made to amend that?
Okay.
The county says yes? Okay, so I'll make the motion to amend this from Hope to lighted pathways? Yes.
Okay. Motion made?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to change this funding agreement from Fulton County Hope to lighted pathways, Fulton County lighted pathways?
To lighted pathways.
Just lighted pathways. Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0.
If that's good, out.
So if it's.
Is that good enough?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I can get.
And now we got to approve the contract for lighted pathways?
Lighted pathways.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and can I just, can we change this up here, or can you change that, or do we?
I'll get one Virgil, have her do it.
Okay. And then, because we're going to sign it, so.
You can sign it back, maybe attach it to.
Just attach it to it. Okay?
That's good. So now I'll make a motion to accept the contract for $25,000 to lighted pathways, that is normal, what we came, so.
Okay. I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, if we give the $25,000 to lighted pathways in lieu of Fulton County Hope? Year of 2025. All in favor? All in favor? You guys get a chance to look over travel requests?
Yep.
Okay, we'll get those here in a little bit. Minutes for February 3rd, look those over, any corrections or changes or anything needs to be done?
I didn't see any, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes for the February 3rd meeting, all in favor? And we got claims. Mislanded claims, have you guys looked these over? Any question on any of these?
No.
Okay. Mislanded claims, this meeting, $864,066.19. Fulton County Solid Waste Host fees, month ending on 12/31/24, $33,333.33. Disbursements from January the night 2025 to January 15, 2025, $12,657,15. The decimal point in the right place. Okay, disbursements from 1-3 to 1-8, $15,916.36. Disbursements for 12/27/24 to 1/102/25, $8,650.28. We got payroll, $297,923.49 with deductions of $138,693.25. I guess that was for 1/24. We got payroll here for February 7, 2025, $311,755.07 with deductions of $118,478.16. And, okay. Any old business?
No, Danny. Holly? No.
Kathy? Anybody here have any old business they need to bring up? Uncover, how about new vests?
Nope. But I had somebody from the Blackadder soccer and all that, they're asking if we could help them out by paving the parking lots and the road out there at Blackadder Field, they would pay for material, they didn't know if we could do. So I don't know if it's okay to you guys, I could get with John, and I think there's probably three phases, and depends, and there's three sections, like the road would be first that they were asking about, and then there's a parking area to the north, and then there's one to the northwest for the soft one. So maybe we could break that down for them and just see what would cost, and, you know, if we supply labor, if they want to pay for material, you guys think about it, you know?
Helping out.
It's helping the community and teaching the kids.
Miss the kids, no problem, we could do that for the museum, that's what they're asking us.
John, you think you could find, could find some time in there to work on something? I could talk to them.
Sure, we'll be a big time.
Just let me know, me, we'll go out there, okay?
Take a look at it?
Call me one morning when you're not busy.
Okay, maybe a while.
Okay.
That's what you're counting on, right?
That's a good amount, it's, it's messy out there.
Oh, it's terrible.
Okay. If I can help in any way, I can say that's all, the kids and the community and.
That's what it's all about.
Yep, so, okay. I'll give, child, good with our blessing there. Any other new business? If none? Or motion for German?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.